And welcome to the October meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. Would you please rise for my pleasure? The meetings of the ZBA are divided into two halves. During the first half, we'll have public hearings on each of the applications that are before us tonight. We'll take them in the order in which they're listed on the agenda, and a copy of the agenda can be found right here in the little black tray at the end of the table. For each application, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, state their name for the record, and then be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. At that point, we'll ask the applicant to give a very brief description of what the issue is, and then members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions and clarifications. When the board members are finished with questions, the floor will then be open to anyone from the public that wishes to address that application, but we would ask that you only address that application. When that is finished, we'll close the public hearing, move on to the next item. When we've finished the public hearings, we'll go back to the top of the agenda for the deliberation phase. And during this part of the meeting, there's no further public input, but certainly you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations and to our vote. First item, Brian Haas, 53 Buckingham Avenue. Okay, have a seat, and if each of you would just state your name for the record.
My name is Brian Haas.
Steve Burnaby from Mezzarelli Architecture and Planning.
Mr. Burnaby and Mr. Haas, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so can you just briefly tell us what it is you're planning to do and why you needed variance to do that?
We're requesting a variance for a deck to be built around an existing pool. The deck would then be attached to the house, which would place the pool in violation of code due to the property lines. Initially, the deck was planned to be much larger than it is now. Unfortunately, you know, being that we're in variance, we decided to pare it down. The deck's space, which is required right now, is to house chairs, pool toys that would go in a very small shed. Really, the reason that we're doing it in the fashion that we're doing it is my daughter has special needs, so it allows for easier access for her.
Betty, any questions?
On my diagram, it doesn't appear to me that the deck is gonna be attached to the house? Because it looks here like there's a space, big space.
Well, there's two stairways, one that comes from the kitchen. There is no, I noticed on the plan there that we don't have a door drawn into that space. I think that's one oversight that I made. But where that, where you see the house itself, where it says wood frame, where the dotted line is, if you go directly straight from that, like head down towards the pool, in that little cove right there is where that, we'd actually be knocking a hole in our house for the door to go right onto the deck.
Okay.
But we didn't mark that with the right notation.
And the pool, so my question, I question for legal. If they get the variance for the deck and the pool is closer or further away from the sideline, do they need one for the pool also, or just the deck?
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, you're wrong with it.
All right.
The pool is in existing use, and it's there, so just the only thing that's needed for this would be for the deck.
Okay, then I have no other questions.
Art?
No questions.
When was the pool built?
The pool was installed this past summer, approximately in July.
Okay, but the idea is that the pool and the deck are all kind of a single unit?
Eventually, I hope so.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, and I'll just note for the record here that this is a corner lot, and so technically you have two front yards.
Correct.
This is why we're talking about a front yard setback, although, to me, when I was there, the real front of the house is on Buckingham Avenue.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's certainly the way it looked. Larry, any questions?
Questions.
Paul?
From the diagram, it appears that the deck will be a little farther from the lot line than the house is now, is that correct? Do you want to?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, then I don't have any further questions.
Phyllis?
No further questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
I'm sorry, I do have one.
Oh.
Go ahead. The vegetation that goes along your lot line there?
Yes.
That's pretty mature, is that gonna stay there?
All the vegetation, we initially, back in May or June, had a lot of the vegetation cut back because it was getting to, close to the power lines that feed to our house, and they were cut to a point where we couldn't really cut any further, so we expect all of that to grow in by next year.
All right. That's all I have then.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 53 Buckingham Avenue? All right, seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Two, Ann Bowman, 76 Southgate Drive.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say that Ms. Bowman and myself worked together for many years, so we've known each other a long time. I don't feel that that would affect my work on the application, but I would just like to disclose that.
You have no financial interest in?
No, I wish. No.
Okay, all right, unless there's an objection from anyone on the board, no, no reason that you would have to recuse yourself. Okay, yes, your name, please.
My name is Ann Bowman.
Ms. Bowman, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, what brings you to this meeting tonight?
Well, what brings me to this meeting this evening is that I had the pleasure of meeting Thomas Wyacek, who very kindly informed me that there was no CO on record, which was my primary purpose in having him come to the house to do an inspection so that I could obtain a CO for the room. It was then that I discovered that apparently there was no permit initially when that room was put onto the house.
Okay, good. Betty, questions?
I have no questions.
Art?
This is the room that we lived in, you said, it's already built, it's been there for twenty-two years, you said?
Yes, sir.
Thirty or longer, what do you?
August of 1995.
So, no changes at all, you're just making it legit?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. That was actually going to be my question, but when it was put in. Let me also note for the record that a letter has been submitted from Frank and Joanne Fink, who live immediately adjacent to your property, stating that it's been there for 20 years, it hasn't been a problem, and they have no issues at all with it. So, just let that be part of the record. Larry?
No questions.
Paul?
The addition follows the line of the house, right?
It does, it follows the line of the house, sir, and to my knowledge, I mean, there was no problem at the time. I had assumed that the gentleman who did the addition had obtained the permit, and I guess he assumed I had obtained the permit, and we know what happens then.
Okay, that's all I have.
Phyllis?
No, I have no questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay, anyone in the audience wish to address 76 Southgate Drive? All right, seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item three, Jason Macirola, 45 Van Wick Drive.
Jason Macirola.
Mr. Macirola, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so could you tell us a little bit about what brings you here?
Sure. My wife and I bought our house in May of 2016. When we purchased the house, there was what we thought to be a pretty unsafe, like paverstone walkway in front, so we dug those out, and we were trying to figure out what we wanted to put there, and we figured out that the best option would be a safer, small patio deck in front of the house. It butts up against, doesn't go against the house, but it does butt up against a existing concrete little patio that was there where the paverstones went from. We, my lack of understanding, which I probably should have called the building department ahead of time and figured this out, but I was under the influence that I should have been 30 feet from the road, which was my mistake. So, I had 31 feet, but now I'm 22 feet once I figured it all out, so I have an eight-foot variance that I wanted to request.
Okay, and the structure that we see there now with the railings and whatever, that's finished, there's no more that you're gonna?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay, Larry?
Oh, I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Okay, sure.
This says that there is no building permit somewhere in here, is that true?
We requested the building permit, but because of the variance, we got it denied until we figured this out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, Larry?
I have no questions.
Paul?
You requested the building permit before or after you built it?
After. I didn't know, it was, again, my mistake, that I thought if it wasn't against the house and it was considered a floating deck, what we have it on is the building blocks, like the cement foundation blocks, so that's how we built it, and I didn't know that I needed the permit for that.
Were you there when the inspector came out?
I was not.
Do you have any idea whether any part of that deck meets code?
I had called Wayne, who came out right after I got the letter, and we spoke on the phone for a while. We didn't go over specifics, but we did go over the fact that I did need a permit. He explained all that to me. We didn't go over anything up to code-wise.
Okay.
Okay, Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. All right, if there are no further questions from the board, anyone in the audience wish to address the application at 45 Van Wick Drive? All right, seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Item four, Bay Woo, 132 Cedar Avenue.
Good evening. I am Ricky Rosari, I'm representing Dr. Woo. He might show up here any second, but he was called in late.
Mr. Rosari, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, and why are you requesting a variance?
We are taking over as a contractor, the previous contractor went bankrupt, and Dr. Woo has taken us on, and when we looked at the previous plan that was approved, it was insignificant, it was inappropriate for the amount of power that he needs for his house, so the, I believe that the variance that was approved was for the frontage of his side yard, and when we did our engineering, we just needed an extension of that already approved frontage.
Okay, so just a little clarification, there was a previous variance that was granted?
Correct.
To allow a ground-mounted solar array to be 10 feet from the side, actually, it's, I guess it's a side lot line there?
Correct.
And, but for a smaller length?
Correct.
So, what you're requesting now is a longer array, but it's still gonna be 10 feet from that side lot line?
Correct.
Okay, so no closer, no further?
No other variance, no other change. We met with the building inspector and Rose, Roseanne, I believe, Rose Marie, the, your liaison, and they basically said that that's all that we needed was that additional frontage on that side.
Okay. Betty, any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Art?
No, I mean, we've been up there, nobody's gonna see, no matter what he does, nobody's gonna see it.
Right. Along that, along that rear lot line, there's a stone wall.
There's a 10-foot stone wall on both the side and the rear yard.
Okay. Larry?
I have no question.
Paul?
No, no questions.
Phyllis?
And so how, how high off the ground are you gonna mount those?
It was exactly the same height as was previously anticipated, so no additional height.
So there's no moving of them or anything, so they'll never be seen?
Correct. These are stable, this is a stable array.
Okay, thank you.
You're up.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address the application at 132 Cedar Avenue? Yes.
Hello, my name is Paul Kozlowski, I live at 126 Cedar Avenue, and I was...
Mr. Kozlowski, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so is it possible to see a top-down of the design plan? I'm a neighbor who's on the other side of the stone wall, and I was aware of the earlier request for the solar array and the variance, and had no dispute then, because of the size of it, I was just curious to be able to see, so where's?
There's the location right there. That's exactly where it was going to be.
Okay, okay. I have no issue. Okay, but what is the height?
I believe it's 10, 10 foot 11 inches, which is what it was on the...
Oh, okay, so it's approximately even with the wall?
No, it's lower, it's, there's probably about a three-foot drop from the base of the wall to the beginning of the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the wall sits on an embankment.
Okay, that location, yeah, I, that's my, I'm at the other end, okay.
Okay.
That's all, thank you.
Thanks, all right.
Sure.
Any other comments on 132 Cedar Avenue? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda, I'm assuming that we can continue...
Take a break.
I think, I think we'll, I think we'll just move on here. All right, back to item number one, Brian Haas, 53 Buckingham Avenue, this is a variance to allow the construction of a deck to be located 11 feet from the front lot line where 30 feet is required. It's a type-two action, and the county has made no comments. Any questions here, comments?
No.
I mean, I, I, I think this is fairly straightforward, so let me draft some findings here, and as usual, people should feel free to add or correct as I go along. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The board finds that the pool and the deck are consistent with uses in the neighborhood and will not be a detriment. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method. There's really limited space in the backyard or the front slash side yard, and it's important to the applicant that the deck be connected to the house, which further restricts where it could be located. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, is substantial in the sense that it's gonna be located 11 feet from the front lot line instead of 30 that's required by the code, but the board also notes that the deck will in fact be further away from the, from the street than the house currently is. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, the board finds that the proposed deck will have a minimal impact on the environment. And finally, five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. The board notes that it is self-created in the sense that the applicant wants to go forward with this project. It's not self-created in the sense that the benefits that he wants, the applicant wants, are really require that it be located where it is, and so in that sense, it's not self-created. Okay, with those as findings, Betty, you wanna?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one, based, this decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, and the result of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, I ask the board to adopt these findings as stated by our chairman in items one through five.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the variance been made and seconded, any comments, discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousals? Okay, item one is approved. Number two, Ann Bowman, 76 Southgate Drive, this is a variance to allow an existing addition to be located 15 feet 4 inches from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. Again, this is a type-two action and requires no environmental review. Again, I think this is pretty straightforward, any comments or questions?
It's been there forever.
Well, 1995, that's long enough. Okay, okay, again, for the purposes of establishing findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, the board finds that there will be no undesirable change. The board notes that this addition has been in place for, since 1995, and the board further notes that the immediate neighbor has said that there is no problem with this addition. Two, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, the board finds that there's no feasible alternative, it's an existing structure. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's, the variance would amount to roughly five feet where a 20-foot setback is required. Given the fact that the addition runs along the line of the existing house, the board finds that this is not a substantial variance. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, again, the board finds that it has created no problems since 1995 and is likely, unlikely to create in the future.
That one, I think that I would add that it is similar in size and location to other residences in the area.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of houses there that have that.
Have had additions over the years, yes, okay, good point. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it was not self-created by the current applicant. Okay, with those as findings, Art, do you want to make the motion?
Sure.
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the chairman's and the board's finding. Approving this variance, board adopts his findings, determinations found in items one through five, and the chairman's...
Right.
... is read.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the variance in item number two, 76 Southgate Drive. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousals? Item two is approved. Item number three, Jason Macirola, 45 Van Wick Drive, this is a variance to allow a front porch to be located 22 feet from the front property line where 30 feet is required, and again, it's a type-two action. Any comments, discussion? If not, let me propose as findings, one, whether an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The board finds that many of the houses, I think virtually all of the houses along Van Wick Drive, have small front porches or decks that serve in effect as decks, so that this, the deck that's been constructed there is very much consistent with the neighborhood. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant may be achieved by some other method feasible to pursue. The board finds that, given the need to replace, really, the, a walk between the front door and the, and the existing driveway, there are really no obvious or feasible alternatives to building either some kind of a deck or a porch in the present location. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, the variance amounts to eight feet where, a variance of eight feet, in other words, it's 22... it's, it's twenty-two feet back from the street. And the board also notes that, in this case, the property line is already set back several feet from the actual street pavement, and so this, this only, only serves to further mitigate the, the amount of variance. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, the board finds that this deck will have virtually no impact on the physical and environmental conditions. And five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Self-created in the sense that the applicant wishes to improve in, in the existing walkway, but it's not self-created in the sense that the walkway was located where it is, probably since the house was originally constructed. Okay, with those as findings, Larry, you want to do the?
Yeah.
Well, I just have a concern.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the survey, and it indicates that the corner of the house is thirty-one feet nine inches from the front line, and it says the front porch is eight feet nine inches.
Wait, the corner of the house is?
It says, in handwriting, it's thirty-one point five, but in, on the survey, it's thirty feet nine inches.
Okay, wait a minute, I am, for some reason, I am not seeing that. I see a thirty-one point five.
Yes. But the, that's handwritten, but...
Yeah.
It says thirty point nine. In any case, even using the handwritten one, I think it puts, puts the porch closer to the front lot line.
I mean, the...
If the front porch is fifteen feet two inches by eight feet nine inches...
Okay, eight feet nine, you're right. Oh, I see what, I see what you're talking about.
It says twenty-two, doesn't it?
It says, it says twenty-two, but if you do some math, it comes out to twelve.
Thirty point, okay, I see what you're talking about. Nine.
Maybe it is twenty-two.
Okay. Is the front of the house actually parallel to the lot line? I don't know.
All right, maybe the, if, if it's thirty-one point five, I guess it works out to twenty-two feet.
Okay.
Survey, it depends on which one is, is correct.
Okay. It, it seems to me what is clear is that what he's proposing, it's the distance between the property line and the front edge of the porch is twenty-two feet.
If, depending on which number you use, whether it's thirty-one five, then it's twenty-two feet, but if it's what the survey says, thirty feet nine inches, it's a little, it's a foot closer.
Yeah, I, I really don't know what that thirty-one point five is measured to.
What's this one's?
Or wait a minute, no, that's, that's the distance, that's the distance from the edge of the porch to the, to the lot line.
Right.
Oh, on the, to the side lot line?
Yeah.
Side line.
Yeah.
All right, then it's a little, it's, it's closer than twenty-two feet to the, to the front lot line.
Well, again, I, if, if the front of the house is parallel to the lot line, I don't know that it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just know that these things are often a little, a little cockeyed. I, I, I'm, my inclination is to grant the variance for what the applicant has requested.
I don't have any problem with that, just so long as it's accurate, but...
Yeah.
And I guess it's the applicant's dilemma.
Yeah, I mean, we, 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 we're not in a position to go and measure it. Okay, okay, so Larry?
I move that the board approve the request for a variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the...
Staff.
Conclusions of the chairman. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings...
You're right, the findings... Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, recousels? Okay, item three is approved. Okay, item number four, Fe Wu, one thirty-two Cedar Avenue, a variance to allow the construction of a nineteen-foot by fifty-two-foot ground-mounted solar array, be located ten feet from the side lot line where twenty feet is required. Again, this is a type-two action. I gather from the previous comments that nobody has a problem with this, I think it's gonna be pretty much invisible.
The applicant's answers to one through five is usable as well.
Okay.
As well as our prior determination, so...
And, oh, and, okay. Okay, Paul, so you want to do this?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four, it's based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visit by board members, our findings in a prior application dealing with this, as well as applicants, one through five, submission with their application.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve item number four, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels, approved, seven zero. Okay, the only other item on our agenda is a request from the planning board to serve as lead agency on a proposed building, the Modi New Ophthalmological Building on Davis Avenue. If you're familiar with Davis Avenue and the current ophthalmology building there, the new building is proposed to be due east. There's a parking lot there now, and at the end of the parking lot, there's essentially a vacant space. They're proposing to put a two-story building in that vacant space, and then some modification of the, the parking arrangements. If anyone wants to see the, the drawing of this proposal, as it went to the planning board, I'm happy to share this, but I think in keeping with our past practice, this is something that we would leave to the planning board to do the environmental review. So, if there are no objections, I move that the town of Poughkeepsie ZBA approve the request from the planning board to serve as lead agency for the project at twenty-three Davis Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, that's the end of our agenda.
Do we have to stop?
It, we're, we're having so, we're having so much fun, and the, the audience is just...
They're having a good time.
Absolutely.
They're having a great time out there.
It's, it's, it's hard to, to stop here.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't have my back up second tonight, she was missing.
We are adjourned.